I can hear you guys now.
Oh, there we go.
All right.
Hi, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, I can. Why don't you introduce yourself, Catherine, and then we'll go and you can go from there.
Okay. Perfect. Sounds great. All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Catherine. I'm one of the project managers at Great Blue Research. Happy to be sharing the results of this year's customer satisfaction survey with you all. This is our second time that we've done the survey for Reading. We did our first one back in 2020. And this one was conducted towards the end of of this year of 2023. So let's dive right in. So a little bit about Great Blue. We do, you know, wide variety of different marketing research surveys. Mostly on the quantitative side like this one, primarily digital with some phone as well. And we do a lot of research with other public power utilities across the country and specifically a lot within Massachusetts as well, just like Reading. So our project overview here, like I mentioned, this was the second year we conducted the customer satisfaction survey for our MLD. So we surveyed both residential and commercial customers for the survey with really the goal of identifying areas of, you know, strengths for reading and as well as areas for improvement so that ultimately we can improve ratings moving forward and determine areas of improvement. So our areas of investigation, I like to kind of think of this page as, you know, if this were a book, these are kind of, this is your table of contents or different chapters that we're going to cover today. So really briefly here, looking at satisfaction with Reading as a whole, customer service, some questions about communication methods and desired topics of communication. Should the peak interests and preferences, any anticipated bill payment challenges that folks have? Satisfaction with both the rebate application process as well as outage restoration. Knowledge and interest in air source heat pumps, likelihood to install solar panels. Participation in Reading's energy efficiency electrification and rebate programs. And then lastly, the overall understanding and interest in time of use rates. So here's our research methodology snapshot on the residential side. Like I mentioned before, we use a mixed methodology approach here. So we did some phone surveys as well as unlimited digital surveys. So in total, we had 1,215 completed surveys, which is very high for a public power utility. So that was definitely impressive. 200 of those surveys were conducted by phone. And then, like I mentioned, we left the digital survey open for about three weeks for an unlimited number of completed surveys. And so in total, on the digital side, we had 1,015 completed surveys. The survey itself was 44 questions long and the margin of error was plus or minus 2.8%. So what that means is if we were going to conduct this survey another hundred times, the results would come back somewhere within plus or minus 2.8 percentage points of the results I'm going to share with you all today. And the research dates, we started the, we started fielding the survey in mid-January, January 16th, and then wrapped it up towards the end of February. So again, that includes both the portion of phone fielding and digital fielding, and those periods didn't overlap just to ensure that we didn't have any customers trying to take the survey both by phone and digitally.
Yes, yes, yes. We have a question. Go ahead, Dave. You have a question? Yeah, I just wanted to, you said 200 were phoned by a random sample, right?
Correct. Yes.
And then another 800 were filled out online?
It was 1,015 were online. Yeah.
1,015 online versus 100 with random phones?
Correct. Yeah.
So my question is then is, you have 1,000, most of them are from people visiting the link. How do you know the distribution of those are actually random? Or who they are, or that they represent a random sample of the community of 1,000?
Yep. Yeah, that's a great question. And a lot of times what we do for a digital survey to make sure that it's more of a random sampling is we won't go ahead and send it to everyone all at once. What we'll do is we'll randomly select a portion of the customer list to send it to first, and then based on what we get from that, we'll do another random sampling of people. So we don't send it out to everyone digitally. We send it out to random buckets of people, which is inherently kind of like how a phone survey works really, because the phone survey, you're randomly calling people. So here we're just kind of randomly sampling people from a digital methodology approach, but just doing so in buckets of, of, you know, a random sampling of customers. But that's a great question.
Good follow up. So this isn't just people who might have seen the link somehow and filled it out on the website or?
So that's a portion of it as well. So there's a lot of different ways that we do digital surveys. So some of it is going to be more directly, like I mentioned, through emails that are sent directly to customers, but then some of it is going to be people visiting, you know, seeing the link on the website and visiting it that way. You know, in the grand scheme of things, we usually see a lot more people taking the survey when we directly send it to them versus if they go into the website, you know, to pay a bill or look for something, some other information. You know, we don't usually get as many completes from that link as we do from more direct outreach methods.
You know, and then I'll stop. But then you know how many were from your solicitation to a random email versus how many were just from the static link on the website?
I don't have that number off the top of my head right now, but I would just have to look for it. But we do have the ability to, you know, collect and break down that data. I just don't have it right now.
Just a follow on question, Catherine, to that. So do we know that the 200 telephone recipients are mutually of 1,000 plus digital?
Sorry, well, I think you broke up a little bit there. What were you asking about the 200 phone surveys?
I was asking whether the, the telephone survey recipients were mutually exclusive from the 1,000 other digital surveys. In other words, if they could have been people that you called also did the digital or vice versa.
Yeah. So we, that's why we feel them both at separate points. So we will do the phone portion first and from who took the survey by phone, we remove them from who we reach out to from the digital survey to make sure that they don't have a chance to take the survey twice. Of course, you know, there might be a couple who sneak through if they're people who took it on the website. Because we don't have a way of knowing who that respondent is who took it on the website. That's essentially functions as an open link versus, you know, just directly sending it to customers. So those are kind of the exceptions to it. But, but yeah, usually that's why we don't feel the two simultaneously so that we can remove those people who took the survey by phone from our digital outreach methods.
Thank you very much.
Yep, absolutely.
So we have one more.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll bet along. But could you just comment briefly on the confidence level versus the margin of error?
Yep. Yeah. So what a confidence level means is that when I mentioned, you know, conducting the survey 100 times, what this means is that 95 times out of 100, so that's the 95% confidence interval. The results will come back somewhere within that margin of error. So essentially what that means is essentially how reliable the data is. Usually a confidence level of 95% is pretty common in in marketing research types of surveys. You can get as high as like a 99% confidence level, but that's not typical for survey research. I think that'd be more typical for, you know, if you're doing more like scientific research and stuff like that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Go ahead. Keep going. Keep going.
All the data that we're going to learn about from the study, like how much we think about it as a board of how much stock is put in it does depend on liability that we're talking about recently?
Yep.
So and 1,000 being from a link that you don't know who filled out the link, whether it was as a result of your emails or somebody just visiting the website. And I'm not saying it happened, but somebody could go, they wanted to and fill it out 30 times.
No, they can't actually. No. So we put an IP restriction on it. So the same person can't take the survey multiple times from the same device or from the same household.
If somebody who wanted to, for whatever reason, say, hey, send it to 40 people, they all want you to push if you do that and send it to whoever they want to, you could get 100 or 200 results out. Somebody wanted to promote the link, they could do that.
Yeah. If they were motivated to and knew 100 people that also wanted to take the survey, you theoretically could do that. But we don't usually find that kind of stuffing the ballot box principle to come up much in public power utility surveys.
I just don't know how you could come up with a 2.8 margin of error based on 1,000 being from a separate monkey.
So, so it's based off of your customer size and how many available records we have. So, you know, we plug in the the number of customers, which is your total population size. And then we also plug in the number of completes we got. So with 1,215 completes and the number of customers, I don't have that off the top of my head. You get the margin of error plus or minus 2.8%.
That's only, you know, that's only if you know that it's a truly random distribution of phone. It's okay. I'm just saying, we need to think about that as a board. I know we talked about this before the survey of like, you know, I think a 400 random phone would have been, would have done the trick.
400 random phone surveys would have given you a margin of error of about 4.8%. So this actually gave you a better margin of error because you had more surveys that were completed.
Random. It's okay. I'll stop. I mean, we're going around the same point. Don't know what survey multi-links are sold out randomly by a random distribution of our monthly customers. Don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it is one of the limitations. We do what we can on our end to send the survey out digitally, but candidly, it's a lot more difficult to get 400 people to take a phone survey now than it was five, six years ago. A lot of that's because of pandemic. A lot of it's also because of a lot of other companies telling people not to answer the phone for fear of scams and things like that. So it's a lot easier to get more people to fill out a survey digitally than, you know, 400 phones. Even the 200 phone surveys is difficult to get, but we still did it. But yeah, that's just the way the world's changing.
We're going to be less likely to fill out a survey, you know, if you are older people. 1,200 or 1,000 probably don't have a lot of older people.
Yeah. So I'll actually get to that in this next slide. But when you look at the demographics, we have age here. And so actually, more of the customers who took the survey this time were, you know, 55 years or older than on the younger side. So that is one change we're seeing with digital surveys is as they become more and more mainstream, it's not so much that they're really concentrated on younger customers. They're really more representative of your customer base. But what we find when we do phone surveys is that they tend to lean a lot more towards older customers than younger customers, because younger customers are just less likely to pick up the phone nowadays, especially if they don't know who's on the other end of the line. So this is pretty in line with the, you know, trends we've seen in the past couple of years since the pandemic hit. And then looking at income here, pretty even breakdown here. We do have a lot of people who said prefer not to say, but that's very common for a question that's more sensitive like income. Rent versus own, 90% of the respondents were homeowners compared to 8.5% who were renters. And then for town of service, it looks like a pretty even spread across, you know, the Reading, Wilmington, North Reading and Lynnfield service areas.
Or somebody says they, oh. Prefer not to say. I prefer not to say, I guess would be a better, better thing there. 1.4% don't know where they own or own a rent. Okay?
Yeah, you know. Some things you just can't explain.
I digress. Hold on, please.
So for the research methodology snapshot on the commercial side, again, a mixed methodology approach. In total, on the commercial side, we had 67 completed surveys, 50 of those were done by phone, and then 17 were online. This is pretty in line with what we see for commercial surveys for all utilities that we work with. Usually we end up somewhere with, you know, 50 to 75 completed surveys. So the 67 is not, you know, an out of the ordinary low number. The 17 online is also in line with what we've seen too. It's a lot harder for us to get businesses to take surveys online than it is to get them to take surveys by phone. So that's where the phone methodology is actually holding up a little bit more. Survey length was 42 questions, so pretty similar to on the residential side. And our margin of error here is plus or minus 11.8%. Just given the lower sample size there. Research dates were the same as the residential survey. We fielded the two surveys in parallel with one another. And our respondent snapshot here. So for a number of employees, we had a lot more small businesses taking the survey that were either, you know, less than 15 employees or 15 to less than 30 employees. More folks, more businesses that rent their property versus those who own. And then again, a pretty, pretty even spread of where these businesses were located in the RMLD service territory. So our key study findings, this first page is what we call our organizational characteristics. So these are some characteristics, characteristics we use to. Sorry, is that question?
Go on.
All right. So this is our list of organizational characteristics and we use these to evaluate many different surveys across the country. So they're pretty standard as a point of comparison. And what I highlighted here in green is where Reading was really, you know, performing above national averages, but also just where they received the highest ratings. So in particularly reliability of service and customer interactions and communication, received high ratings on the residential side. And then reliability also received high ratings on the commercial side as well as overall satisfaction with RMLD. I just circled and read the areas where the lower ratings were scored for. So helping customers understand solar installations and rebates was the lower rated characteristic for both residential and commercial. Have the averages there on the bottom. The one thing to note is that we did change the questions a bit since the last study. So the averages aren't necessarily comparing the exact same set of questions. But I think the important things to note are just where, where you see increases in ratings and characteristics that were measured year after year. So communication experience increases as well as reliability. Community service remained pretty consistently high on the residential side. So those are all positive takeaways here. So now diving into the the findings here, a couple of these slides are just sort of our takeaways that we saw as we dove into the data and the report. So one of them was regarding awareness of rebate and program offerings for residents in particular. You'll see in a couple of slides, we have a table where we looked at overall participation in different RMLD programs and services for both residential and commercial customers. And we looked for both residential and commercial customers. Um, and we looked at, you know, whether they participate in the programs and then whether or not they were actually aware that that program existed. What we noticed was that there were a lot of programs that people, um, you know, a large segment of customers were not aware of, namely the electrical panel upgrade rebate had the, um, lowest awareness level, um, as well as the online, um, energy efficiency store, um, electric vehicle charger rebate, air source heat pump rebate and solar rebate. Um, so the recommendation here was to continue to push communication efforts about those programs, just to make sure that, um, all folks who are interested in participating are aware that they exist, um, and can take advantage of those offerings. Next one is on the ability to, um, opt into text message notifications. Um, so this was a question we asked in the survey about overall interest in opting into these text messages for things like shred the peak alerts, um, outage updates and bill payment information. Um, and, you know, a large segment of customers were interested in receiving those texts. We also saw that, um, a lot of customers indicated they would like to receive more information in general about, um, outages and power restoration updates. Um, so kind of pairing those two together, um, shows that folks are really interested in, um, receiving text messages and specifically text messages when it comes to, um, outages and getting those more frequent updates. And then lastly, about air source heat pumps, um, this was an area where we saw a pretty significant increase in overall knowledge of air source heat pumps since we did our last survey in twenty twenty. So that was certainly impressive. Um, thirty-seven point five percent of residents and twenty-six point nine percent of businesses said that they would be interested in installing an air source heat pump. Um, you know, likely seeing smaller numbers there mostly because people may not be, um, necessarily in the market and really considering that kind of a purchase. If you don't necessarily have a need to, you might not be thinking about it. Um, but also when you look at, you know, a number like thirty-seven point five percent, this is over a third of customers are, are overall interested. So while the number, while the percentages themselves might look small because they're not the majority of customers, it's still a very significant segment of customers who are starting to explore this area. Um, but it would be beneficial to, you know, continue to educate more folks who aren't as knowledgeable about what the benefits are. So that, um, they understand and have a, uh, more, um, full knowledge base about the subject. So, um, go diving into the data a little bit more. Um, so a couple of slides back, I showed you those organizational characteristics. Um, and here we have a follow-up question about, um, reasons for any poor ratings that were provided for RMLD. Um, and so the top, um, reasons were high rates and costs. That's usually what we see as a top rating across the board, no matter what. Um, no communication and interaction as well as lack of renewable energy options, discounts and subsidies. Um, so that kind of leans into what I was saying before about, you know, rebate programs and awareness. A lot of times we find that customers, um, don't necessarily think that their utility doesn't offer these programs, but they're just not aware of what their utility is offering. So that's a big education piece as well. So some questions about customer service, um, you know, these questions were only asked to people who indicated that, yes, they did indeed have an interaction with, um, Reading in the, you know, recent past. Um, and so most of those folks said that they, their interaction, um, entailed them calling the Reading office. Sixty-five point nine percent on the commercial side, fifty-nine percent on the residential side. Um, some other folks said that they were emailing with customer service or, uh, visiting the office in person. And then overall has satisfied you with the way that the RMLD employee handled the caller visit, um, strong satisfaction ratings here. Um, both residents and commercials reported increased satisfaction with customer service since, um, the twenty twenty study, uh, ninety-five point four percent of residents and ninety-seven point seven percent of businesses. So really high ratings there.
Catherine, if I could, just a quick question on the, uh, those who provided poor ratings, I'm deciding high cost as reason. The cost I'm assuming you're referring to here is for the actual program, whatever it might be, not the cost of, you know, expense per kilowatt hour that Reading has provided. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this would actually be referring back to the organizational characteristics, specifically tying it into rates. Um, so that was one area that we asked them to evaluate. So it's more specific to the actual rates that they're paying for their electric service versus, um, the cost of any particular program or service. Right, so that's the important thing to take into consideration. It's why we have sample size up here. So you know, it's, this is only of the two hundred people who gave poor ratings for any of the organizational characteristics. Um, so this wasn't just specific to rates, but it's just of those two hundred that gave poor ratings. Forty percent of them, um, attributed it to issues with, you know, high rates.
Thank you. I'm just very surprised because, yeah, our rates are so low compared to, um,
Yeah. Yep, and I think that's a huge, um, we do see this a lot for public power utilities with the same, you know, kind of explanation of, well, our rates are lower than, than other IOUs and they, you know, for the most part, they definitely are. Um, but I think a lot of the issue is an education piece with customers. A lot of customers don't even know that they're a customer of a community owned utility. Um, and even then, they don't know what the benefits of being a customer of a community owned utility are. So, um, they don't have an understanding of, you know, where their rates are compared to what, you know, their neighbors in a different town that's serviced by, you know, eversource, for example, might be, um, experiencing. So I'm sure if they had a point of comparison, they would have a better understanding of it. But a lot of times people are just siloed in on what their rates are and people are always going to find issues with their rates because they can always be lower, um, even though it's not realistic. But, but people are always going to complain about rates.
Catherine, if I, I made it clarified, so this survey was right in the middle of our.
There's, there's always, uh, people don't want to pay. And it just, it's just a human nature thing. So I, I, regardless, no matter what amount of communication you're going to get, who's going to be a customer that you have to pay.
Yep. Yep, exactly. Alright.
Go ahead. Good enough.
Is, um, did you break down like, this is of, of the customer base, right?
Yes, yeah.
Like how many were from each of the four towns that we serve? Do you have that somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, so that's up here. Bear with me just a second. So that's, um, this chart that we have town of service. So we had thirty-eight point eight percent were from Reading, thirty-two point eight percent from Wilmington, nineteen point nine percent from North Reading and then seven point three percent from Lynnfield.
That, that roughly close.
Alrighty.
Whether there's differences by town and it would be, because I mean, yeah, one consideration, you know, we, we get picked by the people in Reading and we're owned by the town of Reading. Not to say for one child, it was the other three. But that being said, it would be nice to know what is Reading think.
Yeah.
And then also what, what are the others think? And they might have different.
Yeah, I can absolutely have of, of the town, um, of each of the residents by what their, um, ratings for, for this question. So we can see where more of the, um, you know, high rates or cost issues arose and where there were greater concerns in different areas, if there's any differences there.
I was actually asking, or generally, but the whole survey, not just about that question.
Yeah, yeah, we can do it for the whole survey as well, while we're at it.
Just to clarify, we're affiliated with the town of Reading. They not all.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alrighty.
Okay. Go ahead, keep going.
Alright, um, alright, so we did our customer service here. Um, and then, you know, similarly, we had a question here asking for anyone who did have an interaction with customer service but reported that they were, um, either somewhat or very dissatisfied with the way the interaction went. Um, we asked them to, um, tell us why in an open-ended format as well. Um, so what you'll notice here is, um, these are all, instead of percentages, they're all N equals. Um, because our sample sizes were so low here. I mean, we're talking about thirty-two people, um, and two businesses. We didn't want to put percentages in because it doesn't really give a good idea of, um, what people are actually saying. Um, so, so what we see here though is that two top reasons for dissatisfaction were communicate, poor communication and poor customer service, which makes sense. Um, and then, um, you know, following that, we're billing issues and poor rebate programs. But, um, we just, you know, want to note here that it's, um, N equals ten is really our sample size. So it would show up as about a third of the customers. But, um, we wanted to make that a little bit clearer there. So getting into some of our questions about communication methods, um, first, um, the bar chart on the left, looking at the value of different communication methods provided by Reading, um, a lot of folks, um, giving, you know, high ratings for the value of the email newsletters as well as the RMLD website. Um, ratings for the newsletters increased over twenty twenty, um, eighty-five point eight percent for residents and sixty-eight point seven percent for businesses. Um, and then similarly, the website also received, um, really high ratings as well, seventy-nine percent among residents and seventy-seven point six percent among, um, businesses, um, slightly lower ratings for the webinars, Facebook and Twitter. Um, a lot of those being, you know, not necessarily everyone is going to be following you on social media. So there's probably a lot of folks in there who, um, aren't interacting with you on social media as well as attending the webinars. Um, these were, um, you know, the webinars and Facebook were questions that we added in, um, this year. So we don't have tracking data for those. And in an open-ended format, again, we asked what ways Reading's communication methods could be improved to provide more value for customers. Um, a lot of folks said, you know, no ways, you're doing a good job, no issues at all. Um, we did have some folks, um, referencing, um, more email communication, um, as well as not using social media, less emphasis on social media, um, some folks requesting text messages as well as the newsletter, um, in addition. More questions about communication, um, looking on the left there, um, how would you describe the frequency at which you receive information from Reading? These are really high ratings compared to a lot of public power utilities. On a national level, these numbers are usually in the seventy percentage, uh, point range for about right communication. But here, um, eighty-nine point four percent of residents and ninety-two point five percent of businesses feel the communication they receive. Um, the frequency at which they receive information is about right. Um, so that's a great positive there. For topics that folks would like to receive more information about, um, primarily, like I said before, outages and power restoration updates. Um, and then, you know, some things about energy conservation, how to conserve electricity as well as education on, uh, thermostats, energy saving, saving measures and energy apps. Um, so really folks want information on outages, but they also are really looking for a lot more energy conservation related information. So, um, here's where we ask customers how interested they would be in, um, receiving text messages from RMLD about outage updates, shred the peak and bill payment information. Um, so over se- seven out of ten residents and almost three fifths of commercial respondents said that they'd be either very or somewhat interested in receiving those text messages. Um, you know, more of the commercial customers were not all interested compared to residential customers. So definitely something that more residents are in favor of them businesses, but regardless, it's still the majority of both customer bases that are interested in these text messages. So looking specifically at communication, uh, with respect to the shred the peak, um, email notifications, um, more residents, over half of residents said that they're currently receiving these notifications from Reading, um, compared to thirty-eight point eight percent of businesses. And when asked the best way to notify them, um, that it's a peak time and that they should conserve their, um, energy usage during that time period. Um, most folks said that they'd like to receive email notifications. Um, well, we did see a lot of residents who would like to receive text messages as well. So primarily looking at more digital methods, um, like email and text message for those notifications. Payment assistance options. Um, so first we wanted to ask, um, if folks or their organization as a whole anticipate having any challenges paying their electric bill in the next six months. This is the question we've been asking a lot of utilities since the start of COVID, just because there were some financial issues that a lot of folks and businesses, um, experienced that did prevent them from, um, being able to pay their bills on time during that period. Uh, but the good news here is that very few customers anticipated having any issues, so not a grave concern at all. And then looking at awareness of different payment assistance options that Reading offers, um, over two fifths of residents, so forty-three point five percent. Um, said they were very or somewhat aware of those, um, offerings, um, prior to the survey effort. Looking at rebates now, um, asked the question, have you received a rebate from Reading? Um, impressively, almost a quarter of residents said that they've received one, which is actually a pretty high number when you think about it. Um, compared to nine percent of businesses. So definitely something that more residents have taken advantage of thus far than on the commercial side. And then of those customers who said that they've previously received a rebate from Reading, we asked how satisfied they were with the process of applying for and receiving that rebate, um, and very high satisfaction ratings across the board, both on the residential and commercial side. Ninety point six percent of residents were satisfied, um, and all commercial customers who have received a rebate, um, reported being satisfied with that experience as well.
Did they give a reason? I noticed you got on the not at all satisfied, like three point three percent. Is there any particular reason that the survey indicated why that was?
We didn't have an open end for that question, so we don't have, um, specific responses for why they were not at all satisfied. I mean, this is, I think one customer, because there's only twelve people who, um, said, you know, twelve commercial customers who said that they got a rebate. So three point three percent is likely just one customer. Um, but yeah, we don't, unfortunately, didn't have a open end for that question to have any kind of insight as to why they were not at all satisfied. So looking at, um, power outage restoration, um, and whether or not folks found that to be acceptable or not. Um, we did, you know, of note here, we had an answer option for those who, um, had not experienced a power outage in the past year. Those folks did not. Um, their answers were not included in the data here. So this is just looking at those customers who experienced any kind of a power outage in the past year and how acceptable they found the time to restore power to be. Um, so eighty-two point two percent of residents, that's down slightly from eighty-seven point three percent. Um, so the time to restore power was, um, very or somewhat acceptable. Um, however, of note, we did see about a four percentage point increase in people who said that they don't recall if the time to restore power was acceptable or not, or not. Um, you know, it's likely for these people that the time they experienced was probably not that long, um, because they didn't recall the experience. So usually if people recall their experience, um, they recall it for negative reasons. Um, so, you know, that's likely where a lot of those, um, people who found it to be less acceptable, just don't recall what the experience was like. Similarly, on the commercial side, ninety-two point three percent, um, so the time to restore power was acceptable. That's an increase over what we saw in twenty twenty. So looking at air source heat pumps, what you'll see in the table on the left, um, is that in total, um, more respondents, um, so that they're knowledgeable of the concept of air source heat pumps this year than they did in twenty twenty. So, um, you know, about a twelve percentage point increase on the residential side and, um, about an eight percentage point increase on the business side. So, um, those are pretty significant increases. Um, especially when you look at your margin of error on the residential side or margin of error was less than three percent. So seeing an increase this big is definitely noteworthy. And when looking at interest level here, thirty-seven point five percent of residents and twenty-six point nine percent of businesses were overall interested in, um, exploring installing an air source heat pump in their house or at their business. Um, so like I mentioned, you know, it's not the majority of customers and there are a lot of customers who aren't interested at this time. Um, so education to customers about what the benefits of air source heat pumps, um, definitely can't hurt. Um, but it is important to note that there is still a significant segment of customers that are interested in, in exploring these options moving forward. Looking at solar panels, um, the majority of folks were not likely to install solar panels at their home or business, um, in the next, um, or actually, this is just general, you know, in general of all time, not likely to install solar panels. As you see here, uh, fifty-seven point six percent of residents and seventy-seven point six percent of businesses are not at all likely. So not something that folks are as interested in, um, as they are in other technology. Looking at the renewable choice program specifically for residents, um, asked how likely folks would be to participate in the renewable choice program. Um, over three out of ten residents, so thirty-one point seven percent, so that they would be very or somewhat likely to participate in the renewable choice program. And we asked a similar question on the commercial side, um, and over a third of commercial customers, thirty-four point four percent, so that they would be likely to participate in the renewable choice program.
They give any reasons why not, uh, what they're not likely? Is there any reason why behind that?
Yeah, again, we don't have, um, you know, specifics, but I think when it comes to these kind of program enrollments like this, I mean, looking at, you know, a third of customers or three out of ten customers, again, it's still a significant segment, even though it's not the majority of customers. But when you're asking people to enroll in these programs where they're, um, you know, investing a little bit more, you, you do always have some part of the customer base that's not as into, you know, funding these renewable choice programs. Um, and when you're looking at, um, you know, anything that's going to ask for, you know, any kind of a opt-in or a bill increase or some extra kind of effort on the part of the customers, you're going to see some people who just aren't interested because, um, they don't have as much of a motivation to be as some other customers might be. So I think that's where you gotta let, get a lot more of those not at all likely, um, customers probably fall into that category. Versus finding anything particularly wrong with the program, just simply not being interested in it.
Let me ask a question to maybe the department. Something we could do here to make that, make this go better.
Yeah, so I think for something like this, where you're looking at a program, um, you know, I think education is key. Um, and I think, you know, breaking it down so that it's, um, easier for, um, you know, the simple, you know, a- average, everyday customer who doesn't have. average, everyday customer who doesn't have a lot of knowledge about renewable energy, breaking down things like the benefits of the program and, you know, what their investment's going to look like, but then ultimately what benefits they're going to see from it. I think those are the best ways to really, you know, promote and communicate about the program in a way that's educational, but also, you know, kind of advertising and really, you know, promoting it to customers. Because people really aren't going to invest in something if they don't see, you know, a direct benefit to them as a customer. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of people will say that they're, you know, interested in renewable energy, but when they're asked to, you know, pay more money on their bill, suddenly they're not as interested in it. So a lot of times, customers just really need to be motivated by, you know, direct benefits that they'll see as a customer versus benefits to the utility as a whole.
I'm in a hundred percent, mostly in solo one and two, so it's actually, it's giving me a benefit in my bill. Because I think it's only like three dollars for the hundred percent, I think I'm my last bill.
Right.
We're already. Invigorated, the renewable choice. Also. Twenty twenty. Already at twenty-nine.
Think you just cut out a little bit there, sorry.
I apologize, so I think bottom line. Our action items in the newsletter. First rolled it out, we got a lot of press, a lot of interest. I'll take a look at this.
Think I might have missed the ending there, but it, was there any like a?
The RMLD team, the staff has taken on action.
Awesome. It sounds good. All right, so here, this question, looking at kind of a table of different rebate programs and energy efficiency offerings that Redding offers, looking at if people either have participated in the past, will continue in the future or have not, but they plan to pursue it in the future. And then also looking if people were even aware of the program in the first place. So overall, you know, the highest levels of current or past, current and future participation are for the no cost home energy assessment as well as the online energy efficiency store. We also saw a lot of anticipated future use of the air source heat pump rebate. So that's just kind of showing some more traction and interest that is growing towards air source heat pumps. And then looking at overall awareness of the program, we saw more folks saying that they were not aware of the electrical panel upgrade rebate. But we did see a lot of other customers reporting they're not aware of some of the other programs such as the EV charger rebate program as well as the online energy efficiency store and the air source heat pump rebate. And then similar line of mentioning here on the commercial side for more specific commercial programs and services, more. Oh, go ahead.
We got a question.
Yep. Okay.
The team at RMLD, I mean, we refer to this as these heat pumps. They're really air conditioners, well, as heat pumps, right? I own multiple ones and they, they work great. Why we call them air conditioners and heat pumps? I mean, there are people who don't know that they're on air conditioner.
Yeah, it sounds like some type of heat supply, even though the technology is heat pump, because it comes in both ways.
It comes in both ways. And, and I mean, I've certainly used mine in the wintertime for eight. In the summertime, I use it for air conditioning. And I, I'm just wondering if people realize that it have dual functionality options, which might make it more enticing. Want a heat pump, it's not a heat pump, it's a, an air conditioner. Yeah, an air conditioner, I don't recall with another term for it, but I, I'm just thinking it, it might be something as simple as that. They just don't know, everybody would love to have air conditioning.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great point. So much of it is the way it's messaged and packaged to people. And when you're talking about, you know, customers who don't have as much knowledge about what this technology entails. I mean, I think I've always, you know, when you look at the word heat pump, you're thinking it's just a heating technology. It doesn't have a cooling side of it, but it can go, go both ways. So I think, yeah, the way you kind of package and explain that message to customers is going to make a big difference.
If you've already got a furnace, why can't you get another heat pump?
Right, right.
But you might want an air conditioner, which is a very.
Exactly. That's a great point. Um, okay, so looking at commercial programs, we saw the highest levels of current and future use for the energy assessment program as well as the energy initiative rebate. And then the highest numbers of folks not wanting to or not planning to use the commercial solar rebate program or the EV charger rebate. And again, those are really contingent on what people have for plans in the future. So we did see that a lot of folks were not planning to invest in solar. So logically, it makes sense that they're also not planning to take advantage of the rebate program. And same goes kind of on the EV side, if that's not really part of the agenda items for the organization, then they're not necessarily going to be interested in the rebate for it. So looking at the time of use rate programs here as kind of our last couple of questions here. You know, we had a lot of texts in here just kind of educating customers about what time of use rates are in case they haven't really heard of those terms before. And when asked about their understanding of time of use rates, we saw that almost half of residents, forty-nine point four percent, and over half of businesses, fifty-three point seven percent, so that they either have an excellent or good understanding of time of use rates prior to this survey effort. And then when asked if they'd be interested in taking advantage of a program like a time of use rate program, if Redding were to offer one, over two fifths of residents and over a third of businesses, so that they'd be interested in that kind of a rate structure. One thing to note here is that you saw a lot more businesses who are not at all interested. And that really, you know, makes sense, is in line with what we see in a lot of other surveys as well, because a lot of businesses really aren't able to shift the way that they do business based on the time of day, based on peak energy usage. It's a lot more convenient for a household to do that than a business, so that's pretty typical there.
Go ahead, Dave.
Catherine, just a question on the data point there. You just said that two, over two fifths of residential respondents said they would be interested, but the data says down in the right-hand chart. So the question was, how interested would you be in a rate that rewards conservation during high peak hours and penalizes for high usage during those same peak hours? It's nineteen point eight, very interested, and forty point four, somewhat interested, so isn't that sixty percent?
Yeah, that's, that actually should be three fifths instead of two fifths, that's, that's a good catch there. So there's actually more than we thought.
There's a typo there, so, and then there's another nine point four who aren't sure. So sixty percent, better than sixty percent say they want this or they're interested in it, ten percent aren't sure. And thirty percent either say not very or not at all. So that means by two to one margin, sixty percent to thirty percent of either very interested or somewhat interested versus not very interested or not at all, you have a two to one margin supporting and wanting. That, that I take away from resident.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Go ahead. Quick comment, that. There's a little difference here between time of use rate and understanding versus people not understanding rebates or not wanting solar. I, I see a conflict with those. I mean, I would think someone who wants an EV charger would want to go solar and want batteries, yet a lot of the respondents on this survey wanted nothing to do with that data that we got yet here, everyone says they understand time of use. I don't know if everybody really knows what.
Sure.
I, I, the education on time of use.
Do you think we don't understand what they're answering?
I believe so.
So but, but just once the question says, how interested would you be in a rate that rewards conservation during high peak hours and penalizes high usage during those same peak hours? So the question explains right there, explains what the rate is, like you're going to get paid more for peak. So I feel like the question doesn't say time of use, it explains what it means.
Right, right.
I, I, but it's like, well, that means you can't use your power between, you know, three and seven PM at a different question you just asked me, right? This is just a generic question, right? No, and again, I, I just, we had some data, a data point that came back that it was, I don't want to do that. And now we're saying, oh, I want to do this, right? So that's why I'm, I, I, I just, I'm taking this one with a grain of salt.
Sure.
Yeah, and I, I will just add too, when you look at something like time of use rates, it's asking for a lot less involvement from the customer. I mean, it is asking you to conserve energy during those times and not use it during peak hours, which is a challenge for sure. But it's asking for less of a monetary investment than something like solar energy or electric vehicles do. And I think when we do a lot of surveys and we're asking about solar and we're asking about electric vehicles, people are really primarily turned off still by the cost of these things. You know, electric vehicles are still, on average, more expensive than gasoline vehicles. And solar is still an investment, if you're, you know, putting up panels, you know, on your house. It's something that not all customers can afford to do, whereas if you look at a time of use rate and it's, oh, well, I just have to either, you know, just limit my electric usage during this time, that's something that might be a little bit more feasible for customers. And that's why we usually see a little bit more interest in something like that than solar or electric vehicles or programs like that.
So I think maybe the follow-up question to this, you know, that are very interested or somewhat interested, had a follow-up question that said, if this rate were in place, would you, would you subscribe to it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, or even just asking customers like how likely they would be to actually reduce their electric usage, because a lot of people say it's a great idea, but then it's, oh, well, the times are actually three to seven, well, that's tough, you know?
Three to seven, but yeah, I mean. But I think we've, we've had this discussion a few times and when there's a lift and a workload involved to like research it, make the phone call, ask for the meter, there's enough friction there that people don't go ahead and do it. I don't, I mean, I have data on how many are asking about it and, and then once they hear about it, they don't take it or just.
I, 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 I think where we are from a practicality. Over as much as. Things we're doing right now is reporting the MDM. Actually, we're on that. Question, actually, make the best. Are we there? All right, so we'll need to, in our metering system. Like, can right now. There's, there's a, there's a balance, I think, there's a balance from, from, have to, we want to move. With our ability, come up to a limit. We have to switch the meter, right? Yeah, we have to switch the meter and, and the infrastructure support. But, so what we're, what we're going to end up doing is, I have to do it anyways. My system, which is our. That's the process of doing. MDM is kind of a, it's a. Might potentially be an interest, I'll subdue the time of use that our meters. But also, to follow, follow line, support from us in terms of wanting to do it, just not pushing it aggressively quite yet because it can only handle a certain number. RP, the AMI system. AMI system. And I got mine, that I have to swap the meter and I paid actually two bucks a month to recoup the meter. Is that how it happened? You know, it is, the, 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 the friction's not in the process, the friction's in, we're not aggressively promoting it because we don't, we don't want to get to a point where we, we. Right, we're letting the customers come along, it's not a, not an aggressive advertisement, it's. Kind of find it, so it's all. Proceed forward, yep.
Catherine, back to you.
All right, sounds good. So just kind of wrapping things up here with our considerations, and these we've largely gone over already. So I'll, I'll kind of breeze through these quickly and just touch on them briefly. But, you know, one was about rebate program offerings for residents and really pushing awareness of those through education efforts just to ensure that customers are fully aware of all the rebates that are out there. This not only would help, you know, drive awareness and potentially enrollment in those programs, but also help the perception that Redding helps customers understand, understand energy efficiency programs. That was one of the characteristics that had slightly lower ratings than others. So that would be a good area to kind of boost ratings for, you know, survey efforts moving forward. Offering the ability to opt into text message notifications, we saw that a lot of customers would be interested in receiving texts about things like outage updates, shred the peak alerts and bill payment information. We also saw that a lot of customers wanted more information about outage updates overall. So texts are, you know, obviously a really good way for people to be getting those notifications on a more real-time basis when there is a power outage. So that was kind of our recommendation there. And then lastly, looking at educating customers more about the benefits of air source heat pumps. Again, we did see a pretty significant increase in knowledge of air source heat pump technology. We already talked about a couple of different ideas that we might be able to employ for kind of twisting the, you know, communication and messaging surrounding air source heat pumps, so customers are a little bit more aware of what that technology actually means to them and what the different benefits would be. So that was kind of our recommendation there, just to continue to boost interest in that, in air source heat pumps moving forward. And that takes us through to the end. I'll, you know, leave this up here if there's any other questions that folks didn't get a chance to answer or to ask during the presentation. We can take them at this point, these are just the names of some people who helped work on the project. So if you have any follow-up questions, these are all good people for you to reach out to.
Questions and discussion?
Last one, it's, we know how many rental units there are in our territory versus non-rental as a proportion of the total number of units. Small point, well, we don't have that same number for. But one thing. Higher proportion of the commercial. Which will, which will. My earlier skepticism, that lines up well, you know, to, to the credit of the company with the eight point five percent they said will rent. Fund and Greg's saying ten percent of our customers, that lines up very well.
So Greg, what's the next step? What are you going to do with this? Well, we have quite a few action items. Got several of them, but increase the awareness in general. So there's air source heat pumps, there's the rates, bills and rebates. And the, the other key thing, aren't talking about, but. But part of the management system plays, but. The market is just on the table. Email works very well. Please, I'm doing a really good job in terms of the. I think, I think we have, there's not quite as much text, text is a little bit different because text requires an opt-in. Our, we've been instructing for the. To opt in. Excellent, so the takeaway, bottom line is, for more text messaging, we'll do a little bit of work on it, a little bit of work, we'll, we'll. Get our work on the renewable choice.
Do you think at some point we would have a mapping function? I know that, for example, and.
So we're, we're, we're nearly ready to, that'll be on the website, and then we can also link. Text messaging as well. Good news is. Our, how would you?
Why, why do you need it?
I didn't say that. But, but we do, we do have a, an outage management system, it's. It'll first come on the website and then, and then. Question, questions? Catherine, we thank you, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome, great.
Any parting words, Chris?
No, just thanks for having us and thanks for all the great questions. And just feel free to follow up if anything else pops up afterwards. My email's down there and then our phone number is at the bottom of the page as well, but feel free to reach out, otherwise, thanks for having me.
All right, very good, thank you for, thank you very much.
I have a good night.
Okay. Let's move on to Hydro Quebec.
So, um, as you, we have. Corrected for. Portion of. That's more substance with Bill. Selling those rights, a lot of regular. Us to that, to monetize. Have an offer on the table now, our current contract for those use rates. That's offer would be. The, um. H R, the. Block. Come to our current. Um, the term will be. Um, and. It's higher than our overall portfolio. Going at a premium. Uh, and everybody. But we don't get the energy from. But they are providing energy as part of. As part of the. Yeah, so we're selling them the. For them to then.
This is what we've been working on for the past year and a half where we want to take it off of our. Right, so. Kind of quirky that we're selling our rights and getting energy. The quirky.
We're not getting the energy from Hydro Quebec. Sell the rights from that.
No, 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 we, we are, we are, so this deal, we would be buying energy, which we want to do. Currently, we're not buying any energy from Canada, no energy from Hydro Quebec. We are simply selling at a, at a lower value than even this deal. Rights for somebody else to use that line. And we've been working on, if you've heard several times, um, from us. To create a mechanism for us to. Energy. On those, on that Hydro Quebec transmission line and. Right, carbon, which is, is, this is, this is a. Great opportunity for us, the only drawback, it's only five years. Right, this is the kind of structure that we've been working on.
I don't understand as well the transmission line where that is. Well, it's been in place at times. I mean, I keep seeing that Maine and New Hampshire are fighting it a little at. That might already be twenty. A lot of stuff like that. Before. So they won't expand it, is what you're saying? Since we want to expand it beyond twenty. Right. At every, yeah. I misunderstood that, that's, that. Some reason I thought that the transmission line didn't exist.
Now, this, this one actually existed and it's been in, you know, we're built in the mid eighties and the good news, we're in first. We were part of the original. Oh, obviously. The line physically exists, has no source from which to. Now we're actually using values we originally had, it may be invested. Um, and getting, and happens to be non-carbon and it's reliable, it's firm and this is. Probably good.
There's a way to upgrade the transmission line to get more across the existing transmission. Fair, right? Or, or to. You couldn't make the cable, you would.
At the sideline, put these transmission cables.
I know.
Years ago.
I've seen them very huge.
But they, but they used to be a, a bundle of round coils and. Maximize, if you look at the cross section, you maximize that, you can place them. And it's now a sheet strand. It's, when you look at it, cross section, it looks like a solid piece of cotton, but. There's been a massive amount of investment in terms of how to maximize what's on there, but, right, the next step. On the line.
Not gonna happen.
Yeah, for the rest of the night.
It's not, not coming to Vermont, it's not coming through Maine, it's not coming through New York, it's not coming down via submarine from Canada. It won't be directional drilled, it's total NIMBY. You can't even build on the existing right of way in parallel to it. That's, that, it's absolutely ins- the word insanity for a world that needs more power, that want to allow more power to be.
Insane, it's definitely.
From clean energy sources, but, which is the craziest thing in the world, but, you know. That's, that's a story, right?
Been along the same right of way, huh?
You know, no, no, no. Parallel.
So this is part of the reason why as you. Times and we can. Try and figure out creative ways within territory where possible, have to generate our electricity. And, and not, and also outside of our territory. The power supply for these. A lot of effort for us internally, you guys know that, and might as well. How you do this. Thought this way to do it. Kind of we call it. How are we gonna do this? And that, and that's just, I mean, there's a lot of people, but we're.
I have a mo- wanna read the motion, John?
Okay.
Read the motion, Jen, please.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board. Vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to execute a new contract with Hydro Quebec. For energy and associated certificates for a five year contract starting January two thousand twenty four.
That second it? Second, I mean, the second is it? Question, um, the Citizen Advisory Board was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the main topic of. Well, as I, as I told you earlier. Thank you, she should be.
Alright, it's been moving secondary for the discussion. And then, uh, we'll take a vote of the board. Semper. Talbot.
How about I?
Walter. Ms. Beeta. Ms. Pierre, vote some. Go on to the procurement request.
Okay, so this first item is the IFP two thousand, twenty twenty three twelve, this is the full mounted transformers. Typically, this is the one that we talked about, um, when we were together in March. Collectively, we agreed the question was, can you take a closer look at MVA as a supplier? MVA was, was recommended supplier of these pole mounted transformers. Um, the context that you guys probably would surmise, but, um, full mounted transformers, all transformers, it's still, they're still hard to come by. Um, I won't use the word supply chain, but it is a challenging market to purchase. I'm, I'll walk you through a little bit of the research that the internal relative to MVA. But ultimately, we're gonna make a recommendation to purchase a full portion through MVA and then a different. Or, um, power industries, the power sales, let me walk you through MVA. Guys know, right, our, our intention as RMLD is to sort equipment, whether it's transformers or wires or poles or tools. Companies that are established, available and where possible, manufacturing in North America are goal. Also have to, have to make sure that we fulfill the core charter of reliable, low cost, non-carbon power. So we took a look at MVA, um, so quick summary of MVA, it's a Montreal based company. Established in nineteen ninety one, they operate primarily in Canada and the US. Their focus is to design high and medium voltage equipment for transmission systems, distribution substations. They, um, they started manufacturing transformers in twenty ten. Now, they designed the transformers and they subcontract the manufacturing. These transformers are made in China. That is a, that is the one concern we have about the organization. Um, but financially, um, and they're not, and so, I'll, I'll give you some data here in a second. The company is relatively speaking small, but financially strong, so they're about sixty million dollars Canadian. Twenty twenty two, that's up from ten million, twenty twenty one, up from eight point seven million in twenty twenty. About ten million dollars in assets, uh, most of which are seven point seven million in, in cash, retained earnings. Their current liability is only about two million, um, their debt, long term debt is three hundred thousand dollars. So financially, really strong company, but they're not massive, they're not very big. Been around for over twenty five years, they've been manufacturing transformers for twelve years, um. So anyways, you know, kind of bottom line, relatively small, financially strong, um. Fun problem, and they're also, uh, ISO nine thousand registered, they have been since twenty fifteen. They're ISO nine thousand one registration in two thousand twenty five, um, all said done, um. Okay, not great, um, but we don't have a good viable source, um, to get transformers to us where we can take the delivery in a fairly reasonable. So our, our, the recommend, our recommendation, um, as opposed to buy, um, several hundred is, is to buy fifty or fifty two ten X. Of fifty KVA transformers, we're gonna try to do a mix between fifty. Thirty seven and a half and fifty KV transformers, full mounted. The majority of our transformers, full mounted transformers. But fifty KV. So our recommendation is to buy fifty to try them, um. And just not to make this a long term supply contract, um, from us now. KVAs if we have problems with them or whatever, um, have an inventory flowing, this is our commonly used transformer. As of prospecting this. That's first part of the recommendation. Second piece is, we still need to, um, uh, partner the hundred fifty KV and the two hundred twenty five KV, these are three phase. These are more commercial oriented ones, the other ones are primarily residential, um, the. Uh, order four of a hundred fifty KV and two of the two hundred twenty five KV. Off of power sales, these are how we're treating, we've worked with past, um, the finest two X what it would be. Okay, um. Cost is after three times more expensive. However, they are commercial transformers, they're ones that we don't. Buy as frequently. Us to, uh, to take the longer lead time and the more. Buy, what's the quality for them?
From any U S?
Both left. Only, only the MVAs are. That's our recommendation, it's a smaller order than we originally planned, uh, we are gonna go back out and rebid, uh, full mounted. Policy market, but it was, the team worked pretty hard to figure out what the, what's the best scenario. Any. Actually viable, um. At the summer.
Uh, sorry, go ahead, John.
I was just kinda asking, uh, if, if MVA has any plans to move. Any project to do with this now that. And, um, can't doubt he had. Um, basically because of the whole base situation.
I, 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 we didn't ask that question, John, um, they provide a broad range of products, um, started in. Cast parts, clips and all sorts of things, um, so, and they're doing a range of transformers. I, I don't know their plans to be honest, um, if they do that, obviously, then we'd be much more. And they, the good news, they design them, it's their name, right, they warrant them, so it's subcontract manufacturer. Their name's ours. Can't say that they're gonna be here twenty five years from now.
Yeah, it's, it's just the survey, I mean, Walmart's not gonna give out posters, wait, I'm afraid.
Yeah, well, we're trying, it, it, we're, we're trying to. All if we can. Actually. Case, you know, we reduce their size, you know, this is what we. For that will keep us running and minimum. For risk, and we don't know. Good news, these aren't overly complicated systems, they're not single phase transformers.
Right.
For less. Thousand dollars on each one. Money, multiply.
I've been asking, has grid had any. Um, yourself.
Yeah, I know, I, I, it, it's, it's, uh, purchasing, you know, I, I. Right now, it's, uh, you know. Go to, you, you're contracted with. Purchase, but I know there's such a, a tariff that you can take away, you can get them. The only thing that, that the financial sound like in that company, it's, it's not very big, it sounds like a port of that has massively grown over the last two years, but they saw an opportunity to. Because there is a, there is a market there.
Yeah.
Um, again, there's these prices, just, it, 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 how do you do it, right? And, and how do you get it in, how do you get it out, which is always a question, um, but it's just jumping off the page. But go a small order, try it.
Yeah.
The quality, they, they start blowing up.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Well, we know, return the balance, a picture comes through.
Exactly.
Right, it's not ideal, I think it's, it's a test, look, it's.
A test, yeah.
It, if they decide to bring manufacturing closer, that makes it totally different, but I think for us, this is basically a stopgap to get it through.
But where's the, where's the other, you, you know, where's the other supplier, I know you said you had an inventory, but now.
Yeah, we do, right, we took, we took an order, so we took a delivery of seven five of these, um, January.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And so we, we, you know, but. Mostly time, right, about thirty weeks.
Yeah.
Um.
To keep this. Another order.
You gotta keep, you know, transformers just don't say, hey, no worries, I'll stay here a while.
Yeah, right.
I've got seventy dollars.
But, um. On what's in the agenda and then.
Right.
The full mounted transformers, the cost on the iPad, so the total of three hundred thirty seven thousand. Then on the three hundred and thirty. Uh, five hundred eighty one thousand.
The, the.
Did you see what I said?
Yeah, the thing is, the, the motion that's in the agenda is not the, not the motion here, this, we have a different motion here that I have in front of me. Um, so.
Wait, why don't you read that one? The.
Motion I have in front of me, move that IFP two thousand twenty three dash twelve. Full mounted transformers be awarded to NVA Power Inc. for a hundred forty one thousand forty six dollars and eighty cents. And Howard Industries Inc., Carab Power Sales Group for a hundred ninety three thousand nine thirty two pursuant to vast general laws. Chapter sixty four, section, paragraph fifty six D on the recommendation of the General Manager, that's the motion I have in front of me. Yes, it's, what the motion that's in the agenda is different from what we have. The iPad does have the correct motion.
Well, I just, in fairness, because we've been working, so the, the final motion that we're actually voting, the one that, that Bill just, uh.
Yeah.
Is, is up this afternoon, because we, we, hard is, you know, what's, what's the right, the best balance? We wanted to get, we wanted to have this finalized, um, so the total is about three hundred fifty thousand, but one, one hundred ninety three plus.
Three hundred fifty, yeah.
So, probably fifty, all of order. Going back to your original balance, not the one that was in there. Uh. Original agenda was, it was five hundred eighty one thousand, we're three fifty. And again, that's out of a budget of one point three million. So, we're, we're taking a small bite on the, for all intensive. So the, so the motion that you're voting on is the one that Phil just read. One ninety three nine thirty two for. Forty three oh forty six for MVA is one ninety three nine.
Are we, uh, so now procedure question, are we going to have, could MVA come forward and protest this? Because it's in the agenda and we're changing the, and we're changing the motion. Are we on any kind of shaky ground here?
Um, if I have it right, we agenda. Exactly, um, but where.
But the minute show that, um. His work.
Oh, and, and, and again, I think that keyword by the word suggests that in. Final motion, so we're voting on the final motion. Double check, I'd be happy to do that, um. On confirmation from counsel, which I. Double check, I'd be happy to do that, um, on confirmation from counsel, which I.
Change motions all the time.
Perfect.
We change motions all the time, so I don't see why.
I, I, but this, this, this is a major change, you know, you're going from, you know, five hundred eighty one thousand MVP power, and you split your, their motion now going, they're only gonna go to one hundred forty three thousand. I, I see potentially MVP could say, hey, you know, I protest this, uh, this bid.
Well, they, they don't have anything to protest, cause they put in for one forty two. They, they, they're the, they're the ones that they didn't put in for five forty two, they.
They submitted a bid for six hundred fifty six thousand, you know, and we could, from a perspective, we can choose as much or as much. And the only, the only question you have, Chair, is, um, Harrison of the suggested motion agenda versus the actual motion that we're voting on. Which is three thousand.
Have some thoughts about that, change of that, that motion, but you know, I don't know how others feel, just go forward with it or what, I mean, just one note, but.
Be reasonable, yeah, because one would say suggestion motion, so we have changed in the past, there's no long history, we change. Reflect the reality.
Uh, just their, their community.
Okay.
And that's the recent.
Okay.
Thousand plus a minute.
So, we have to place the actual, this is their bid response, they said we can do all these items for this price. And then order. That in, in the request for bid, that we can order as little or none. Up to us to say what we want, we as RMLD want to order, that, and that is expected part of every bid that we send. From, from that perspective, we're clean, question is, the suggested versus actual. The actual that you guys are voting on.
We're voting.
Hey.
We're voting.
I think I'm correct.
Yes, the one that you just.
Alright, so. Location should be. Actual.
Well, if you, if we're willing, you know, if the members are willing to vote on the motion that I read here, that's fine. What all things, I think what we do is we show on the record that the motion was substituted for the, the suggested motion in the agenda.
And, and no one.
So fine, nobody's even made the motion, all I do is read the motion.
Right, nobody's made the motion.
I need somebody to, to make the motion. You, you, uh, you make the motion to adopt what I just, I, substitute motion.
Yes, I like to make the motion, to adopt Phil's suggested motion.
Okay.
No, actual motion, actual, actual.
Actual.
Not called amendment though, right?
Not called amendment, just a substitute motion, it's a substitute motion. So, uh, is that seconded?
I'm saying it.
Okay, uh, discussion?
Um, and last, these are our first offers to end the capital budget of one point. Mounted, it's the first time we're dipping into what our capital budget allocation, okay, that's.
Yeah, and we're, we've got more, we've got more bids to set down and orders to do. We need, we need transformers.
Speaker vote, yep, Mr. Stempac.
Mr. Stempac, aye.
Calvert, Mr. Goldsler.
Only you to aye.
Okay, and the chair votes aye. Okay, very good. Come on. The next one I do, think right too, right?
Sure.
Okay.
We're walking through it and then.
Yep, go ahead.
So, as we've talked about before, this is part of our program, and, so, discussion with your pads, uh, first one's heat pump program, and our tools, we have a, a pretty wide, handy, um, that, there's been customers on a regular basis and we've been year or so, weatherization program. Basically be part of the output from, um, the audit program that's already in place, so we have an active audit program. What we want to do, it's offer, um, a base level, um, of weatherization, primarily insulation. The mass safe programs are much more, we're just gonna get started with some. It is, um, the intention, we're gonna talk before we run, is to have it as an option type to those people. Um, part of the benefit of doing whether it's, first for a seat pump, but if first heat pumps are plus as well. Uh, the complexity of a range that goes behind the scenes. Very careful at RMLD. Ability by structure this program, not unlike, uh, unless it's a mass subcontract, out the person who actually, actually the contractor, the person that actually schedules the contractor. Work is all done by a third party, not on RMLD. We'll provide, once that work is all done, we'll provide a rebate back. Based on the weatherization, we have four thousand dollars, we got, our seat. Um, we had two bids that came in, we put together a fairly, um, very thoughtful, um, request for proposals, we received code, and one was for the center of eco technology, both of these are very active, um, in this space. Or if you guys know, uh, our air source heat pump, well, they ended up, the two bids came through, um, one from Bode came in at four hundred seventy three thousand dollars, and the one from the center of eco technology came in six seven thousand dollars. Actually went through, uh, criteria listing relative to criteria, work plan, qualification staffing, and the price proposal. Put that all together, a total points of four hundred, posted up at three hundred one points. Uh, eco technology group ended up at fourteen, that was due to the price. All said done, the recommendation is to select a possible concept, uh, company to actually manage.
That costs thousand dollars for three.
Yeah, so, so right now on the air source heat pump, so we, so we have it in the budget, right, it's in our DEC, it is low incremental cost to, to that's part of the reason why I did the rate went. Um, preference, we, first or seat pump program is about eighty nine hundred dollars a month. As we looked at everything, it seemed like a really, seemed like a fair program. Fits into the budget and achieves our goal of, of weatherization services to, all right, now subset of our customers. Our intention is not to offer it as a standalone, for people who do air source. Right, Bob?
Um, why, why are we doing that, I'm struggling with, I, in our survey, you know, it was saying about, about, you know, what's being offered and, I don't understand, um, I know there are a lot of people that want that insulation program, because that's, that's right, so, um, I, and I understand you're getting two at one, so you're gonna get a, you're already going efficient, now you're gonna make it super efficient, where, I, I know a lot of people want this program, um,
Yeah, so.
That they ask about.
The key piece of information I probably didn't share with you, but for ninety percent of our customers, so, does affect conditioning, the more rating system for that, um, or people are eating either oil or natural gas.
Correct.
They're not in the oil business, and are not in the natural gas business. Logic, um, is, those people that were actually becoming new customers with an air source heat pump, those that would be cell system or natural gas system. Didn't want to do is, finding incentives for oil or natural gas customer who has no natural relation to, to electricity, to find incentive for was a logic line. Only way we could really do it, simplest way we could do it. Right. Could, could go back and make up provision that you have to be, have to be in air source heat pump already, um, unless we should walk before we run this, but the key thing is that, where the network has customer.
It's a fair, fair response, I do get that, so, if someone asks that question, that's a perfect response to come back and say, well, you want more.
Take a rate fair money, yeah.
Yeah, why would you?
No benefits.
That's correct.
Motion please. Right, so I'll just ask that one thing on the motion, the, uh, pennies category, even though it's two zero two.
Two zero two.
Twenty cents on this one, so, if you just move that one.
No, it's, it's a, it's a, that two is much too.
So it's four hundred seventy five thousand and dollars and twenty cents. And twenty cents.
Two is at that, that's two assumptions.
Oh.
Can we round?
Price analysis.
Got it. I'm pretty, I'm good on here, okay.
Can we actually go to, to round numbers here, I mean, it seems crazy, you've got sixty four cents and twenty cents.
Yeah.
I like that. But I have to make sure that from a purchasing perspective, we.
Move that RFP two thousand twenty three dash oh four for home weatherization rebate program. Implementation and support services be awarded to Bode Energy Management LLC. As the responsive and responsible proposer offered the most advantageous proposal. The estimated average monthly cost of thirteen thousand one hundred ninety six dollars and sixty four cents. Over the next three years are a total estimated three year cost of four hundred and seventy five thousand seventy nine dollars and twenty cents. On the recommendation of the general manager.
That seconded? Seconded it, any discussion?
Oh, well, look.
Mr. Stempac.
Mr. Stempac, aye.
Calvert. Mr. Goldsler. Ms. Beeta.
Aye.
And the chair votes you aye, okay?
Thank you, I think this will be written.
Okay. I want my point two sentence back.
Actually, don't multiply it out, doesn't count.
Okay, move on, policy review please.
Alright, the policy, so, if you guys know, we continue on a regular basis to review policies, um, the two today are policy one and policy three, policy one is community relations. And what we went through on the community relations, um, it's off of the package, um, we, at the day, we significantly revised, um, patients and policy, primarily for streamlining and clarity, um, any of the sections were moved, some of them were refined, um, some of them were actually gonna move to internal procedures. It was, it was nine pages, um, pretty deep sell stuff that we thought was more appropriate enough. But the, in terms of revision highlights, um, primarily in section two. So, section two responsibilities, that was just clean, made up and clarified, um, section three, um, charitable contributions. Um, we have legal opinions in terms of what we can and can't do, which is not a lot, right, here we. But, um, so we're basically going with the legal. Um, advertising, um, we don't do a lot of advertising, but it basically says that we couldn't, RMLD. Else, we basically clarified, cause we do, back to the feedback we just got, um, that we do wanna promote. Um, section four, services to town within RMLD service territory, um, we move any, um, identifications separately, says it's appropriate, doesn't belong in the community program, we went, we went through this, we're like, as no policies, procedures, um, add stuff to them, make it pretty complicated, um, sometimes you need to go back and really clean it. This one is significantly streamlined, um, it's down to three pages. Recommendation is to, it's a separate revision, obviously. Our, our focus, you guys know that my, my focus on is on communication and, and marketing promotion, or, our goal here is to work proactive in terms of promoting power and education.
Question? Motion?
Go ahead, go ahead. And part three in the charitable contributions, it, it says that this policy does not prohibit RMLD from contributing funds, right, that, that might, I, I, I hope.
There are limits, yeah, so we have to follow the policies, so if you go to section three on, of the actual document.
Yes.
Right, it says, RMLD follows the policies and guidelines of the Department of Public Utilities regarding charitable contributions and, and, um, does not permit giving funds to the towns that serve in accordance to the twenty agreements, so point D is that we have to stick within the DB two and within the twenty agreement. That's, that's what the policy says. And we can't, but we're, we're significant.
No, no, I, I just, um, I, I just wanted to, uh, cause I know that came up before when we want, we wanna make a charitable nation, and, no, we can't do that, and.
Comes up regularly.
It comes up regularly, cause I know there's a lot of asks.
Yeah, there are.
And then you can, you can easily say, you can defer to it, say no, but there are.
I, you know what we might end up doing, and that's a good point, we might end up, um, you know, to put somewhere on the website, cause it, there's policies we need, there's regulatory policies, not just from the D, but two, um, in particular, and then lesser, I shouldn't say lesser, I think we just leave it, we can't do. And it was particularly prevalent when you get into the holiday season, right, between it's every two weeks I gotta call.
Just can't, I mean, I understand, but hey, it's not the quality, we don't want to, just we're not.
Maybe we could put something on the website. First. It's already there, so. Anyway, thanks for bringing.
Ready for the motion, yep?
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners include policy one, community relations, revision five, as presented.
It should be religion, revision four.
Revision four, I'm sorry.
It should be revision four, sorry.
Revision four, as presented on the recommendation of the general.
That seconded? Hold the seconded? Further discussion? Mr. Stempac?
Mr. Stempac, aye.
Calvert? Mr. Goldsler? Ms. Beeta?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Safety committee.
Right, safety committee, um, obviously, safety is critically important to us, critically, critically important to us, um, that we do specifically, especially the people in, in the, in the field, um, critically important. We had, we had this safe, this safety policy basically cover wellness group, an internal safety group, and electrical safety group. Once again, it was will be complicated, so we went back, or, internal people went back and streamlined the process. So, to another group that didn't really belong to the safety committee, I mean, I understand the concept behind it, but we moved it basically combined the federal and the safe, the federal and the electrical, the electrical basically reported into the program, we're a group of eighty people. Safety committee of and the group. And much more effective, basically took the top layer out, all types of change, so they can simplify, and simplify.
The people that. Two people, is it not eighteen?
Uh, four people, I believe now is six.
Question, questions?
Are you?
Motion please.
Remove that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve of policy three, safety committee, revision four, as presented on the recommendation of the general manager.
Is that seconded? Hold the second, Mr. Talbot seconded too. Take your pick out. Okay, uh, any discussion further? For the vote, Mr. Stempach, Mr. Talbot, Golds.
Aye.
Biede, and the chair votes aye. Alright, we're up to scheduling. Our next meeting is May the twenty fifth, are you okay with that date, everybody?
Twenty fifth, that's Friday, twenty, twenty fifth, so
Yeah, the twenty fifth, that's what I said, didn't I say the twenty fifth?
Uh, it's a Thursday, actually, right?
It's a Thursday. We wanna pull it up?
Oh, I have five thirty at that time. But do, do they, do you wanna stick around for another hour? But do you wanna move our meeting time up? Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I was saying, why don't we move our meeting up to seven? And if you have an hour and a half meeting, um, because you don't have a long period of time between
Oh, no, no. I was trying to combine the two.
Oh, I would
We had a long discussion about having to be see flexibility for the cab to get probably the one, two, or a specific request was can, we'll start earlier, so we have a full two hours if we needed.
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't, I don't mind, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna pull away the independence of it, but I have no problem combining the two together, it's a long night, man.
We might end up doing that on the main meeting. We'll take a look at the agenda topics. That one might merit a meeting. We'll do a little research on that, get back to you.
So
Yeah, so I have conflict at night, so I'm not gonna
At all, at all, so, uh, like we saw Five thirty, seven thirty.
Yeah, we still got, no other problems, okay, we still can meet, okay? Very good. Stick with the twenty fifth and we'll, you wanna meet all together or what, what's, what's our decision on that one?
We'll, uh The default, unless you're otherwise.
Okay, alright, fine. Alright, and after that is June fifteen, so. Alright, very good, you got to, you can all read each other's, are there some future mean, meetings?
Yeah.
Uh, for people, and we've got the chart as to who's doing what, where, okay? Everybody can read. Back here. Just adjournment, so if I can have a motion to adjourn?
Move that the Board of Commissioners adjourn regular session.
Okay, second.
Mr. Stempach.
Mr. Talbot, Mr. Golds, Ms. Biede, the chair votes aye. We're here, we're here.
Right.
Right, thank you everybody.
You're welcome, thank you.